Facility Committee recommendations, as the community knows, number of years ago, many years ago, we started what was known as the Capital Reserves, as mentioned in the report, and it really has been a tremendous vehicle to the advantage of the taxpayer of this district, allowing us to do the so many projects that have been seen all over the district at no new tax dollars to us as taxpayers. So I want to acknowledge planning and work that was done through the committees, and we thank you for those recommendations as such, together with the work, of course, of our central office administration and all planning teams. Any questions from the board?
As the committee, thank you very much and the whole committee.
Bring the mic a little closer.
Your diligence is very much appreciated. I just want to make sure that the recommendations to the capital lines, you and the FAC agreed with and agree that that was the appropriate funding for this year?
Yes, yes.
And the Capital Reserve that we're going to be presenting to the public is also in line with what needs to be done over that time period?
Yes, that's correct.
And in terms of this sequencing of events over the five-year plan that you're kind of putting together right now, what needs to be done in this year's budget for next year, for this summer and the following summers, is all accounted for that you think is appropriate?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Rocky. Seeing no further questions, I'm just going to turn to the public and see if there is any questions in regard to budget at this point. As stated, this was Budget Workshop number four. If you have not yet had a chance, you certainly want to go to the district website and go to Budget Workshop number one, which is the overall presentation of the budget. There's an opportunity to review it, just as Dr. Landau mentioned, both as the presentation itself, and you could watch the video link of that meeting. And as members of the community, I would certainly strongly recommend that at a minimum, if you haven't done that, you should certainly look at that ahead of the budget vote in May. So seeing no questions from the public?
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, please approach.
Please just make sure it's on budget at this point, and then we'll move in. No, absolutely. Will Corrigan, President and parent. So looking through the budget materials, and I know there was a lot going on earlier this year around the universal pre-K program, so I was expecting to see some information in this budget. I didn't, so that's okay. It's probably online somewhere. So just a question, I know year one was a lottery system. I didn't see any information about year two, year three, and beyond, and I know Northside is limited from a footprint space, and I understand that the year one restrictions were due to space. So what's the board's recommendation going forward? How do we expand this program to the future?
Sure. So I'm going to let Ms. Kostangway answer some of the financial, but I will talk to long-term plan, because you did hear in Mr. Panetta's report in regards to a possible bond. Right now, we're having the Financial Advisory Committee and the Capital Facilities Committee look at that long-term project, i.e. expanding space particularly at Northside. There is some, it is in very early talks, and those talks just started this year, but as mentioned, that would be a much larger project than the projects that are typically funded through the Capital Reserve. That would be a bond initiative if the district decided to move forward with that program. So as far as the specifics on the numbers and next year?
So for next year's budget, we have money in there to furnish the two classrooms that we are filling with 20 kids in each classroom for the pre-K program at Northside, and also the difference we have to pay between what scope is charging us per student to run the program and what we're getting funded by the state.
From the government, got it. All right. And I have a second question. That's okay, unrelated. So also, I saw that our utility costs are up nine-plus percent, as we're all feeling that pain. Are there any, from a capital improvement perspective, we have a lot of space, we have a lot of rooftops. Have we explored solar? Have we explored ways to kind of bring those costs down long-term?
So the short answer is yes. Solar has come up as a discussion item, certainly in my tenure on this board at least twice as a possibility. We've heard presentations from both our district architect, as well as the Financial Advisory Committee. Ms. Kostangway, is there anything in particular you want to share in regards to that?
No, we are starting to look at, we have, we currently have an energy performance contract out. We have some debt. All this is going to be retiring in the next few years. So we are starting the process of looking into what projects would best benefit the district, including, I don't know, similar to what Westbury did, possibly carport solar that could probably feed this whole building. So we are, yes, we are exploring these options.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great. You're welcome. Any other questions in regards to budget?
Yes, hello. Good evening. My name is Mike Guglielmo. I had a question regard for the, really, I guess, in part for the FAC committee. Last year, the board agreed to set up a formula to better manage budget-to-budget, state aid, that kind of stuff. I was wondering if that formula was ever created to manage this budget?
I'll let Ms. Kostangway answer it first, and then I'll see if any Financial Advisory Committee member wants to advise.
We did our budget, similar to how we've done it in the past. We do a zero-based budget, and that is why we see some lines going down, because we just did not need the money in those lines, and that's why there are a lot of lines going up this year, because we know the actual costs of things. So this, I'm not, we did not come up with a specific formula. I also do not think that a, I also do not think a specific formula could be applied consistently from year to year based on all the variables that go into the budget process, enrollment, student makeup, you know, of our students and their needs, so.
And I'll also remind you, Mr. Guglielmo, because I know you're a regular attendee of FAC meetings, because this was the first full school year back after COVID, there was some discussion to allow the school year to get back to norm and normal budgeting expenses again, and yes, there is a commitment to continue to look at that from a long-term perspective.
Did I misunderstand last year's FAC presentation when you committed to implementing that formula moving forward, meaning this would be the first year that you would try?
Right. So I don't believe the board committed to implementing the formula, but I do believe the board committed to working with the FAC to create a formula. There was nothing to implement at that time, if you remember, but it was conversation to, in regards to how to create a formula, so we could look at it more of a data point analysis in addition to the zero budgeting that the deputy superintendent does now for budget-to-budget building.
So will you try to, if it wasn't done for this year, and I know, at least, it was a commitment for?
The goal is to have the FAC start meeting in the summer, okay, to start planning early. As you know, that did not take place this year because we had a turnover of members, and the board had to first appoint some new members to the committee. The goal is to start FAC work in the summer, not just ahead of budget, and with that longer-term planning, the hope is that we can get started with that program.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions in regards to budget? No? Great. So with that, we, the board is going to move, let the record show, the board is going to move into the regular business meeting of the Board of Education today, March 20th, 2023. Good evening again. For those that entered the room late, I'll reintroduce the dais. Going all the way to my left, I have trustee Tasneen Megji, I have trustee Len Hirsch, I have trustee David Keefe, I have board vice president Bob Fellerino, I'm board president Mark Hamburg. To my right, we have superintendent of schools, Dr. Danielle Gaetly, we have deputy superintendent of schools, Ms. Diane Kostangway, we have our assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction, Ms. Ed Kemnitzer, we have the district's council, Mr. John Sheen, and the district clerk, Ms. Christina Cortez. I just want to share with the public, as per the open meeting law, this is a public meeting of the East Wilson School District Board of Education in order to discuss school district business. As per Board Policy 2370, the agenda does include two areas that are known as open time for public comment. The time allotted per speaker will be three minutes, and the district clerk is in charge of managing those three minutes. The first open time is ahead of the agenda this evening. You will see it in the agenda. It is designated specifically to allow for public comment on agenda items only. The second open time is designed for comments that do not have to do with agenda items. This is to allow the Board of Education to deal with the business of the district, including items being presented for resolution in a timely and efficient manner. As per the statement that's on the agenda, because we all value this community and the civility we have always demonstrated towards one another, the board requests that the comments be framed in a manner that reflects our continued mutual respect. It is also the Board of Education that critical statements about a named or easily identifiable person, be it staff, community, student, or board member, are not permitted in a public meeting of the board, and we ask that you be mindful of the civility expected. As per policy, persons wishing to discuss matters involving individuals should present their comments to the superintendent's office during regular business hours. The president shall have the right to permit non-residents to address the board on specific topics during open time. As per policy, the president shall have the right to discontinue any presentation found to violate policy. Questions, comments, and concerns must be submitted to the district clerk ahead of open time. On the slip of paper that the district clerk has in front of her, please include your name, topic, and contact information. If selected by the president, please approach the microphone, identify yourself by name and topic, on the topic you'll be speaking on. Per Board policy, all unanswered questions tonight will be noted, and appropriate responses will be made thereto as soon as possible following the meeting. Only those that complete the form in full will be called on. And with that, we have a very exciting agenda tonight. We have a lot of student presentations, so I'm going to turn it over. Actually, I have my student representative report first. Do we have our student here this evening?
Yes.
Yes, no?
Yep.
Oh, there you are. Hello.
Hi, everyone. I am your student representative for tonight. My name is Sophia Eng. So to start off, we launched our spring sports season, which was a great start to March. In addition, March is our music in our schools month, which is basically a month where music education really gets a chance to shine in school districts. Next, we have Wheatley's Got Talent, which was on March 13th. We had some wonderful performances, including classical piano, a magic show, singing, and a dance, which did take the Wheatley's Got Talent crown. We wrapped up our five-year strategic planning meetings with a community forum on March 9th. It was a great way to wrap up months of, months' worth of careful preparation and consideration. The forum themes were gathered from real community input from district community members, parents, students, and teachers alike. Top themes include real-world learning, social-emotional learning, inclusivity, community, future planning, and personalized learning. Next, for showdown, the seniors did take the title. So for dialogue night, this year, dialogue night's theme was Let's Get Social. On March 16th, all members of the community were invited to converse about the aspects of communication and social media in a student-moderated discussion. Finally, the Wheatley Theater Company will be putting on the musical Little Shop of Horrors on March 30th, 31st, and April 1st. Tickets are sold digitally. I recommend the purchase 100%. They're a very talented bunch. That's all for today for the student report. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia.
She said the seniors won.
Thank you, Sophia. With that, I'll turn it over to the superintendent for the superintendent's report.
Sure. Thank you very much. We're so excited to continue our celebration of music in our schools month. With that, I would like to invite Dr. Clapper up, who will bring up some of our students for a musical performance and share some musical words.
Good evening. This is a very exciting night. We have a number of students that we are going to celebrate, and we have a performance. I'm going to introduce Dr. Peggy Ho, who is our band director, and she is going to speak on the students that we will be celebrating tonight. Thank you.
The music department is excited to celebrate the achievements of our all-national and all-state musicians tonight. The past three years were among the most difficult in our music, for our music students. Social distancing and the requirement to wear masks and instrument covers made live music performances both limiting and difficult. After two years of performing virtually, Nathme and Nisma were finally able to return to normal and host in-person national and state performances. The students we honor tonight persevered past these obstacles to achieve the highest honors on their instruments. This year, the Wheatley School has four students selected for all-state: Olivia Ching on cello, Garima Jane on clarinet, Ryan Cazalino on both drum set and as an alternate on snare drum, and Derek Zhang as alternate on violin. Just to understand the competitive nature of the selection process this year, while I was in Rochester, New York, chaperoning the students and attending the Nisma Winter Conference, I learned that due to the closing of the hotels in downtown Rochester, Nisma was required to decrease the number of students invited to perform as an all-state musician by over 300 students. The competition was much more challenging this year, and to have three students selected from one high school was basically unheard of. Thomas Valley was named All-National Trombonist in the Symphony Orchestra by Nathme, the National Association for Music Education for the year 2022. As a national musician, he was sent to Maryland to rehearse and perform with the top musicians nationwide. Just to put this into perspective, Thomas was only one of two trombones selected from New York State and one of six selected from the All-National Honor Symphony Orchestra. We are so proud of the student musicians, and on behalf of the Wheatley School Music Department and the East Wilson School District, we offer you the greatest congratulations and wish you the best of luck as you continue to pursue your musical training and studies. Please come up to receive your certificates of achievement. Thomas Valley, All-National. Garima Jane, All-State. Derek Zhang, All-State, alternate.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ho. And now, we're going to continue with a performance. Mr. Olafsky, our orchestra music teacher, and Ryan Cazalino, who you just saw, will be playing uptight.
I wish it was at every concert we ever played. I'm going to play for so many people here. Anyway, aimlessly browsing the internet one night, as I often do, I stumbled upon this weird, weird piece that was composed for Strangers of Betholos for timpani and cello. It's by French composer by the name of, I can't pronounce his name, Etienne Corichon. He's a film composer, apparently, and he wrote this weird piece, and we will play it for you now. It's five dances. It's all called Dances, and we're going to play three of them for you. Hopefully, we don't bore you too much.[1081.69]
Not sure what top step, but what's next?
That was amazing. It's so wonderful to be able to during the month of music, music in the schools, to be able to celebrate this way. And what a wonderful performance. You want to continue?
Yeah, we just want to say thank you to Mr. Casalino, of course, Mr. Olafsky. And you'll certainly hear this at the end of all the student presentations and awards, but we recognize that all this great work doesn't happen in a bubble. You know, it's the great work of the students themselves, and of course, their family and their teachers. And we so appreciate the opportunity to celebrate them as we have so many times in front of this Board of Education and really highlight the great work and achievements of our students. So we want to thank them, and we'll thank them as we continue to go through. So Dr. Clapper?
So we have a little clip of our musical. Our musical this year is Little Shop of Horrors. That will be on March 30th, March 31st, and April 1st is a matinee. The evening performances are all at 7 o'clock. It's $10 at the door. You can also buy your tickets online. We're going to give you just a little bit of a sense of what you could hear if you would come and see the musical. So, thank you. I want to thank the director, Ms. Picker, who is the director and the musical director, who is our choral music teacher, Mr. John Watts. So, thank you. If you can imagine during a rehearsal, if this is how good they sound, imagine what this will be like during performances. So come on down and please be part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Clapper. Thank you for sharing that with the board. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you again, Dr. Clapper. Great job, Brian. How about one more round of applause for Ryan? And thank you, Dr. Ho, as well. This time, I would like to invite Mr. Scotoro up to proceed with the athletic awards.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the Board of Education for the opportunity to present the Winter Sports Awards tonight and for your continued support for our athletic department. Thank you to our coaches, student athletes, and parents for your countless hours you put in with our student athletes and teams this winter sports season, and for the support you give us each and every day by attending our games, coming to and from practices, and your work in our practices and our games. I'd first like to call up our Varsity Boys Basketball Team. When I call your name, please come up. Coach Rich Slater, Coach Anthony Sparassia, Stav Agajan, Lawrence Brown, Grant Callahan, Mortaza Dogar, Jordan Gazzit, Brian McLeary, Ellie Mizritzky, Tyler Richmond, Michael Santarelli, Aiden Saperzada, Nate Song, Jordan Talber, Alex Zhao, and Zachariah Zoltlegar. This year, our Boys Varsity Basketball Team finished our season with a record of 19-2. They were ranked as high as number 15 in the state. They were ranked as high as number 15 by the New York State Sports Writers Association in New York State. They were winners of the Wildcat Invitational, the Uniondale 10-for-10. They were crowned Conference B1 Champions and earned a number-one seed in the Class B Playoffs. I know I speak for the boys and their coaches and myself, and thank you all for your support throughout this season. The gym was packed many nights, especially for our home and away games, which was a great environment for our student athletes to play in. So thank you again for that. Thank you, boys.
Thank you, Mr. Scotoro, for that part of the presentation. Again, thank you very much for our student athletes. What an incredible year, what an incredible basketball season, and certainly a pleasure to have you down here tonight and to be able to celebrate you. So thank you for that.
Our next team is our Varsity Boys Bowling Team. When I call your name, please come up. Head coach, Ms. Coach Mindy Schwartz, Mitchell Balter, Eric Chang, Joseph Chang, Joseph Dolizol, Daniel Gillette, Cameron Creshy, Ryland Rockfeld, and Carter Tambekian. Come on down, boys.
I think your mom's asking you to take off your hood.
In their third year of existence, the Varsity Boys Bowling Team were crowned Conference Four Champions, and this was their back-to-back conference champions this past winter. Our boys finished first place in their conference, as I said before, edging out Miniola and Sawanaga in a tightly contested conference battle. The team went on to the county team championships and finished third behind Seaford and Island Trees in the small school division, and were fourth. Fourth? Third overall? No, overall, fourth. With big schools, small schools? Fourth overall in the entire county. So tremendous. So congratulations to our Varsity Boys Bowling Team. Nice job.
Again, great job, and thank you to our coaches, and thank you, Coach, for putting so much out there. Ms. Schwartz, in regards to the bowling team, so much information highlighting the bowling team this year, and we really appreciate it, and great to have them down here tonight. So thank you.
Okay, and last but not least, our individual award winners. When I call your name, please come down. Michael Santarelli, Brian McLeary, Coach Rich Slater, Angelo Martello, Lucian Pizzillo, JT Xaros, Thomas Lee, Chris O'Connor, Zachary Samuel, Samantha Jackness, and Joseph Dolizol. Okay, Michael Santarelli was named Conference B1 Player of the Year this year for both Varsity Boys Basketball. Michael averaged 18.7 points per game this winter, and he had a remarkable 82 three-pointers this winter, which led all public schools on the line. Congratulations to Michael. Brian McLeary, who could not join us tonight, was named News 12 Senior Scholar-Athlete. Brian was an All-State Boys Soccer Goalkeeper, Conference Goalkeeper of the Year for the second consecutive year. He was named All-County in Boys Basketball. Special thanks to Coach Cadet, Coach Slater, and Coach Burke through the nomination process and all your hard work over the past four years with Brian. Our Varsity Boys Basketball Coach, Rich Slater, was named Conference B1 Coach of the Year. In his second year, Coach has taken the program to new heights with a record of 19-2 this year, and our first conference championship in 10 years now. Congratulations for it. Angelo Martello was named Conference Champion in our weight throw in winter track. He threw for 31 feet and a quarter inches, which won him the championship, and he placed third at the county championships. Congratulations to Angelo. Lucian Pizzillo was Conference Champion in the 1600 meter. He ran for a time of 1.29.85, which was also a PR. He also placed third at the county championships. Congratulations, Lucian. And JT Xaros, Thomas Lee, Chris O'Connor, and Lucian Pizzillo were named Nassau County Class C Champions in the 4x400 meter relay with a time of 3.47.61. Congratulations, boys. Zach Samuel was crowned Nassau County Champion at 110 pounds for our varsity wrestling team. He also competed at the state championships. Zach defeated fellow Wheatley wrestler Joe Manzano in the Nassau County Championship, and he went an impressive 2-2 in his first state championship up in Albany, New York. Congratulations, Zach. Samantha Jackness competed on our varsity gymnastics team, which is combined with car place. Sam was named an All-State Gymnast this past winter and tied for 12th out of 72 gymnasts at the New York State Championships. Congratulations to Sam. And last but not least, Joseph Dolizol was named Newsday Top 25 Bowler. He was crowned Nassau County Bowling Champion, New York State Championship Qualifier, and named All-State. Upstate, JoJo finished 19th place overall, and the Section 8 Composite Team placed fifth overall. JoJo had a high game of 223, total wood was 1,259, and an average of 209 and .83 over six games. Congratulations to JoJo. Thank you, everybody, for a great winter season. Guys are good.
Thank you again, Mr. Scotoro, and you know, it's really, we speak a lot in regards to team sports, team and the benefits of team, but it is every, it's great every now and then to take a pause and celebrate our individual accomplishments, and we certainly congratulate each of you. And again, we recognize as hard as the students work, and we say congrats to them. We appreciate and thank our coaches, and of course, our families that support so many hours behind that. So congratulations to everyone again.
Thank you, Mr. Scotoro. We look forward to the spring season, the Wildcats. Okay, a few weeks ago, I received information about the amazing volunteer work of one of our seniors. I had the chance to meet with Emma Acevedo recently to learn more about what inspired her and the details behind our endeavor. There's nobody better to hear it from than Emma, so we have a small video that we'd like to share with you tonight.
Turn of events. I'm having a little technical difficulty. The computer's frozen, so I have to restart it.
How about we, we'll come back to Emma's video, and we'll go on to the next. So, as Sophia shared with us, the annual showdown took place here at Wheatley this year. Students were engaged in various activities and spirits events. Decades Days, Rube Goldberg competitions, mascot builders, banner painting, just to name a few. In addition to so many of these fun bonding experiences for our students, we also host several service events throughout the week, and I'd like to share the results of some of our students' work. Over 1,400 books were collected for Book Fairies. 611 t-shirts were created from Metaport for J. Zips. 4,424 food items were donated to the inn. 306 school supplies for the Kids in Need Foundation. And $2,291.39 were raised to support earthquake relief efforts in Turkey and Syria. So while it doesn't matter which class won, although I heard it was the seniors, our students have participated in so much amazing service work, and I am so proud of their commitment to helping others. Did I keep going, Ms. Weinberg? Okay. Last month, our World Affairs Club attended Boston University's 22nd Annual Model United Nations Conference. A number of our students won recognition in their individual committees. Matee Balu won Best Delegate, Rhea Mittel, Best Delegate, Sonia Patel, Honorable Mention, Saria Chabria, Verbal Commendation, and JT Iannoni, Verbal Commendation. Congratulations to all our volunteers and to our students and their coaches for such a successful meet. The Wheatley Business Students went to Rochester this week to compete in the New York State DECA competition against over 2,000 students from New York State. Junior Aaron Rahah and Senior Rhea Mittel came in second place in the Marketing Managing Team Division. They qualified to compete at ICDC in Orlando this April. Senior Mari Balu came in the top 10 in Business Finance. Junior Trevor Guccar in the top 10 for Business Service Marketing, and sophomore Melissa Lee in the top 10 in Hotel Lodging and Management. Congratulations to our competitors, and thank you to Coaches Malik and Ms. Bulen. Also happening this week and last week, I am so proud to share that 50 of our Wheatley students are participating in the Seal of Biliteracy presentations. There are students this year who will receive the seal in 10 additional languages beyond French, Spanish, and Italian. So thank you, Ms. Tripp, and the entire World Language Department for all of that work. Shall I pause? No, okay. I have more, don't worry. Northside School recently held a blood drive and doubled their expected donations with 76 units of blood collected, which equates to a whopping 225 lives saved. As a living organ donor myself, I am beyond impressed. Great work, Northside. Also, at Northside, we saw the return of the infamous Books Alive. A huge shout-out to Ms. Bonnie Klein, Ms. Kiki Kiru, and Ms. Amy Giacchetti for their work in leading the staff through six different books. Mr. Bloom Garden can be seen in his grumpy bear costume with a big smile. Thank you to everybody. Our Willets Road 5th graders enjoyed their STEM class visit to the Planetarium. The Hackathon is coming for our grades 4 through 6 teams. They are busy preparing and honing their skills to be ready for the 429 and April, I'm sorry, and May 5th contests. We also look forward to hosting at Willets Road on May 5th. So thank you for everyone working hard there. Our National History Day students will be at Hofstra this weekend for the Long Island History Day Fair. We wish them luck and look forward to celebrating their hard work. Brainstormers, hot off the press, Mr. Haig stopped me in the hallway today to tell me that he got noticed, that he was there this weekend when our students performed so well at the History Bowl. I even hear there's a national contender, but we will share more details next month. The Wheatley Cybercats, our robotics team here at Wheatley, is competing at Hofstra this week. We look forward to sharing their success as well. Okay, save the date. An invitation from Dr. Mazza will be coming soon from the Special Ed Parent Council, who is hosting their spring event on April 18th at 7:30. I hear there is jewelry making involved. Okay, I think we are ready to go back to Ellen. Thank you, Ms. Weinberg. That's okay.
So what made me want to start doing this work was I saw the news when, in March of 2022, when the war recommitment curse started happening, and after seeing all the destruction and trauma that begins with going through, I really wanted to try and do something, whether it was on a small scale or a large scale. I just wanted to help. And first, again, on a very small scale, where I was just collecting money and clothing and posted on my Instagram for just my friends and family to help out. And then, as I started collecting more items, a family friend of mine had been shorted, connected me to Andrew Alena of Temple Sinai, who really brought the project together. We got bags and bags of clothes and jewelry to the tackle. And a family of these fellows also had their own clutch and helped out. And then, since March, my garage and my basement have been completely filled with clothing, medical supplies. My cousin, who works for Endeavour Class, is filming the 23 books webinar, where we immediately built like boxes, bags, drawers, wheelchairs, medical supplies, and they really came together to really throw it out. I'm just so proud that we're able to get such a large scale of clothing, all that supplies that we took. We invited students from local districts. It was about five different schools, and there was a ton of Wheatley kids there who helped out. And we first started by keeping a bunch of handmade books that were being printed, that were people translated. a bunch of handbooks that were being printed, that were people translated, onto sunflower paper, and then we taped on the boxes and the bags, because we really wanted to get the sense of encouragement and hope when they found these items. And we just had all these things filling up the container, and there were local politicians there to help out, and yeah. Some of the items that I was most proud to see were the coats and the warm clothing, because obviously, in Ukraine, it's the weather there is really cold, and we felt that that was something really important, because all these people lost their homes, they lost all their clothing, they need this warm thing, something to keep them safe. In addition to that, we got, we got a lot of items for mothers, so shoulders, a lot of diapers, and items that they need for their babies who lost their homes and everything that they needed. So my hope is that the people we create know that there's people out there who are on their side, who are really trying to help them, that we're not just sitting by watching on the news and the destruction that's happening to their home, and that they really have things now to help them, whether it's 50 people or 100 people, it's making a difference. And I really hope that they can see that it's people that will be part of helping them.
Emma, are you here? Thank you, Emma. Thank you to your whole family for their work in this project, and to all the Wheatley students who helped. We're so proud of your dedication here at Wheatley, to the community and beyond. I look forward to hearing from you all about how you will make the world a better place Thank you, Emma, for spending that time with me. And as a reminder, we want to hear about all the amazing work our students are doing beyond our four walls. You can fill out the form on our website under the bulletin board on, on the main page. The form is titled East Williston UFSD Community Service Recognition, or you can email me directly. We love to celebrate our kids and their work. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Hi, that concludes the superintendent's.
So, thank you, Dr. Gaetle. So many great things, so much wonderful work for our students. I do, Emma, of course, have to give you a shout out, because I've known you since you were really a little baby. So I just want to say congratulations to all our students, but of course, the great work that you did. And I also want to acknowledge the great work of our public officials around us, who also came down to celebrate you, our local village, East Williston Mayor, Ms. Bonnie Parente, and of course, Jenna, Town Sup, North Hempstead Town Supervisor Jenna DeSenna that came down to congratulate you for the great work as well. So congratulate to everyone, and congratulations, Emma, to you and your family. Okay, so, superintendent's report is done. School Board Report. So there is no School Board Report, because the committee presentations that are typical at this time were done during the budget report. The Board will be reading a statement ahead of the second open time, but this is going to move us into policies. So policies, if you're a regular attendee at Board of Education meeting, policies are constantly under review. There are hundreds of policies that are set up as part of the rules and regulations of the district, and every few years, policies are put under review, and that's what you're seeing tonight. They typically go through a minimum of at least one read before adopting, adopted, most likely two reads, and sometimes they move on to three reads. So what you're going to see tonight is, the Board's going to go through 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 policies. The Board has already received a vice of counsel on each of these. I'll see if there's any questions from the Board, and I'll turn to the public on each of these, and then move on. So starting with Policy 4526, which is up for a second read tonight, Computer Use and Instruction. Any questions from the Board?
I would just like to confirm, Mr. Sheehan, that all the requests that we made, the Board made at the last meeting, it's the same policy and everything's been added in that's supposed to be added in?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Seeing no questions from the Board, I'm going to turn to the public on Policy 4526. By policy, the public has a right to comment on policies before they're adopted. Are there any comments on Policy 4526, Computer Use and Instruction? No? Okay, I'm going to move off the second read of that policy. I'm going to turn to Policy Number 5300 dot 30, Prohibited Conduct. It's a second read, it's a revision. Any questions from the Board? Seeing and hearing, no questions from the Board at this point, I'm going to turn to the public. Any questions from the public? Sure, come on up. Policies, well, Mr. Sheehan.
So policies are on the Board website. There is Board Docs in the website that shows, that has all the Board policies, and they are searchable, word searchable, on the, on the website.
Is there, is there a section of the new policies, or is this all of them?
So they're posted as part of the agenda items prior to a budget meeting for review. Okay, so any policy that's up for review is always posted on the Board agenda. Okay, but policies, if they, as they exist today, are up on the district website, and of course, you hear referral to policies a lot through a lot of different typical matters, typically starting with the Code of Conduct, and all the way through in all disciplines and as it relates to the school district.
Was that included in the email?
Was what included in email?
In the email that we discussed.
Marcelina, we, we discuss policies at almost every single Board meeting. As I said, it's posted as part of the regular agenda. It's typical business of the Board of Education and review of all policies. There are hundreds of policies that make up the school district, and they go through a review about every five, eight, sometimes 10 years. So when they're up for review, they're posted, and as I said, they're never adopted unless at least a minimum of one read, typically two, sometimes three reads, and there's always room for public comment.
There's copies on the piano.
There's also copies available on the piano for the public, if anyone wants them, for the night, for the policies that are up for review tonight. Any other questions on Policy 5300? Not seeing any questions, moving on to Policy, the regs for that Policy 5300 dot 70 dot R. Any questions from the Board? Seeing and hearing, no questions from the Board, I'm going to turn to the public. Not seeing any questions, I'm going to move on, I'm going to move on to the read for Policy Number 5152, Admission of a Non-Resident Student. Any questions from the Board?
I would just like, Mr. Sheehan, thank you for making all the adjustments that the Board requested at the last two reads of this, and I think it's satisfactory the way it reads now.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Seeing no questions from the Board, I'm going to turn to the public. Seeing no questions from the public, and I'm going, I am going to move on to Policy Number 4321 dot 12, Use of Timeout Rooms, Physical Strangers, et cetera. Any questions from the Board?
This is, Mr. Sheehan, this is a policy that the state requires that we have, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Seeing no questions from the Board, any questions from the public? Seeing no questions from the public, I am going to move off the policy reads. Thank you very much. That is going to move us into the first open time. As I stated earlier, the first open time is available for anyone that has questions in regards to agenda items, and agenda items only. Forms I have in front of me do not refer to any agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to approach the Board in regards to agenda items that did not turn in a form? Mr. G, you turned in a form, is it separate from the one I have in front of me?
Correct, this is regarding W in the Conduct Code. It says, "Use of Technology to Promote or Transmit Pornography or Sexually Oriented Material." Define technology, just, does that include like paper as well, like in a book that can be displayed in a junior high library? I just want to understand the definition and how that's tied. I'll let you guys answer it.
Mr. Sheehan.
No, that is not technology as defined in the policy.
It would be great if we could have a real answer that's not filtered by the lawyer. Obviously, this is a hot issue today. Obviously, it seems tied as, it's prohibited here, but it seems okay when it's administered by the school. So if we could please have some understanding of how they're related, that would be great.
I'm just not sure what the question is, but I believe your question is going to float into the second open time in regards to what we're sharing out, which we're happy to address.
No, no, it is not. It's actually, use of technology to promote this is prohibited for a child, so how is it okay for...
Just refer to the section you're referring to in the policy, please.
It's about the policy.
I'm just, are you referring, guys, if you call out, I can't hear the questions. Please, let's show some respect. Section in the policy, please.
W in the prohibited conduct, W number, the last page.
All right, Mr. Sheehan, you can elaborate on that answer, that's okay. Regards to that particular section.
With respect to that particular section, it does not cover paper in the library, this is a tech, the term technology does not cover that term.
Was technology not, was paper not a technology for Gutenberg? I mean, seems like it would be.
I answered the question, thank you.
Do you have any question?
Yeah, he, her question was asked and answered.
It was not.
That's a matter of opinion.
This is specifically technology.
Guys, this is specifically in regards to technology and the use of technology in that section, okay? This is in regards to written material, it's very specific towards the technology as part of the Code of Conduct.
But you're, you're de-emphasizing the core of this section, which is transmitting pornography. Why, why is that against the Code of Conduct? For a reason, right? So I'm just not understanding why that reason is not, why is it linear? Why is it not being applied, why are we ignoring that part of this, of this policy? Don't, let's not emphasize, we're getting caught up on technology, which I've already explained that, but we're not explaining the other piece.
Mr. G, I'm sorry, but it's really, we're not de-emphasizing pornography. The W, letter W is very clear, using technology to promote or transmit pornography or sexually orientated material, or to promote the sale of drugs or alcohol.
Or, or to promote the sale, not to, yes.
Correct, or to promote, correct. It is, it is a part that has always been part of our Code of Conduct and continues to be part of our Code of Conduct today.
And that Code of Conduct applies to who?
It applies to everything that relates in regards to the school district.
Students and faculty.
There are student sections, there are faculty sections, and there are parent and community sections as well.
So this particular section applies to who?
It begins on point A, Specific Reasons Given for Student Discipline.
Right.
And that's the list, so it's student, it's the student discipline policy.
So then it's okay for staff to do that?
No, no, there's other policies that might address what you're concerned about. You'd have to, you know, but this, you asked about this specific one that we're dealing with tonight, and this is a student discipline issue.
So it's okay for staff?
No, no, I didn't say that, and if you come to the microphone, that would be appreciated, and wait for the open time for when we're going to address those. But you asked specifically about this protocol and this policy, and it has to do with student discipline. That's a whole list, goes from 1A through AA, BB, so there's a whole list of things that are here that has to do with student discipline issue.
Got it, yeah, just want to make sure that we have, we are understanding that this is wrong for students to do, so just want to make sure that the standard is applied equally. So maybe we could adjust that in the next session.
And following up to that gentleman's question, the book, Let's Talk About It, which teaches children how to insert something for the first time, is available online. It's only available when a child puts in their East Williston email address and their password, and then they're avail, they are able to access that book online. It is not available in paper, thank goodness.
Again, these questions are in regards to agenda item, we're happy to respond to them if you allow them to be posted to this, to wait until the second open time, so that the Board can continue its business of the district. Alena, do you have a question in regards to an agenda item?
Yeah, I am here about the same policy. This particular book that everyone is here about is actually available for access via technology on the website, so people can look it up, the students, the parents, everyone can actually look it, look it up using the school's technology, the website.
Any other questions in regards to agenda items? No, so we will move off of the first open time, we'll move into the tenure items. I'm going to ask for a second on Agenda Item 4.1, may I have a second? Mr. Keefe, Discussion Superintendent?
You would like to invite Mr. Bloom Garden.
Good evening. It is my pleasure tonight to bring forth Karen Turton to the Board for consideration for professional tenure in the East Williston School District as a Teaching Assistant at the Northside School. Mrs. Turton joined the Northside staff in December of 2018 as a Teaching Assistant in our Reading Department. During her time at Northside, she has also served in two separate reading teacher leave replacement positions, in addition to her role as Teaching Assistant. Mrs. Turton is skilled, is a skilled educator who has a wonderful manner with children. She's a calm, compassionate individual who makes the children in her care feel at ease and forms strong, positive connections with them. Mrs. Turton has primarily been servicing children through the Double Dose Program and Foundations. She also has worked with our students in the LLI program, and is well-prepared for her lessons and has a good working knowledge of her students' strengths and challenges. Her lessons are designed to meet her students where they are at and develop their reading skills accordingly. Mrs. Turton keeps good records of her students' progress and is able to speak professionally and knowledgeably about her students at any time. As is often the case with our Teaching Assistants, Mrs. Turton has been called upon to sub for teachers when we are low on substitutes. She is always amenable to these assignments and is looked upon as a preferred substitute by our teaching staff. Mrs. Turton is always ready to assist in anything that may be asked of her, and she is a valued member of the Northside faculty. Mrs. Pandolph and I feel Mrs. Turton is an essential part of our staff and enthusiastically recommend her candidacy for professional tenure.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bloom Garden. Any other discussion from the Board? Seeing no further discussion, we call for the vote, all in favor, Action Item, excuse me, Tenure Item Number 4.1, all in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, and congratulations, Mrs. Turton. There is Mrs. Turton. There you are. Okay, that's going to move us into the action items. You will see me group a number of items together. I'm going to group items number 5.1 and 5.2 together, may I have a second? Ms. Meg G, Discussion. Seeing and hearing, no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Items pass 5-0, thank you. I'm going to take item number 5.3 by itself, may I have a second? Ms. Meg G, Discussion. Seeing and hearing, no discussion, we call for the vote, all in favor? Item passes 5-0, thank you. I'm going to take 5.4 by itself, may I have a second? Mr. Keefe, Discussion. Seeing and hearing, no discussion, we call for the vote, all in favor? Item passes 5-0, thank you. I'm going to take item 5.5 by itself, may I have a second? Item passes 5-0, thank you, I'm going to take item 5.5 by itself, may I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Item passes 5-0, thank you, I'm going to take item number 5.6 by itself, may I have a second? Mr. Hirsch, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Item passes 5-0, thank you, I'm going to take 5.7 by itself, may I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Just to explain to the public that this is the proposition for this year's budget vote. This proposition being called the 2023 Capital Project Reserve Fund. When it comes to these capital reserve funds, they are very confusing, and the state does not make it easy for us as taxpayers. First, they have to be put on the ballot as ballot propositions, as we have done a number of times over the years. It has to list the specific projects as it does, and as I shared earlier, it comes from no new tax dollars. We save in those, these funds based on the unspent tax dollars from the prior year, and you see those transfers take place at the end of the school year. But then the state doesn't make it easy, even though the taxpayer has in turn approved the reserve. When the money is saved in full, we then have to come back to the taxpayer one more time and ask for permission to now spend the money that they have already allowed us to save and create. So this is an action item to actually create this 2023 reserve as part of this year's budget vote. Any other discussion on 5.7? Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Item passes 5-0, thank you, I'm going to take 5.8 by itself, may I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Item passes 5-0, thank you, I'm grouping items numbers 5.9 to 5.12 together, 5.9 to 5.12 together. May I have a second? Ms. Meggie? Discussion, I certainly want to thank, as we do each year, all of our election workers who, and election inspectors and chief election officer and election workers who sit there the entire day, serving on behalf of the community to run the annual budget and candidate vote. Any more discussion on 5.9 to 5.12? Seeing and hearing no further discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Items pass 5-0, thank you, item number 5.13, may I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Item passes 5-0, thank you, I'm going to take 5.14 by itself, may I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion. Ms. Gaston, will you just explain to the public the standard workdays and the offices of the board and what the state requires?
Yes, these are people that are appointed by the board and were required to keep track of their time and post their hours and total days worked per month, per civil service, to the website and keep track of that on an annual basis.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Item passes 5-0, thank you very much, I'm grouping 5.15 to 5.18 together, may I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Items pass 5-0, thank you very much. Grouping items 5.19 to 5.29, 5.19 to 5.29, I'll give the board a second to take a look. And I'll ask for a second. Mr. Fallarino, discussion. I just want to say, this is really great work by our community and really lots of great getbacks here, and certainly we do not want these donations back to the district to go unnoticed and unthanked, so really thank you very much for each of these that are being presented this evening for resolution. Any, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing no further discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Items pass 5-0, thank you. Grouping items 5.30 to 5.37. 5.30 to 5.37, may I have a second? Ms. Meggie? Discussion. Mr. Keefe?
I have a question on 5.31. Amount given, it says so many dollars per student school year tuition. It starts March 1st and then the end of the school year. Is that the money that we're expecting to extend this school year? Or is that $37,000, $37,000 dollars for the entire school year, we're paying pro rates for March 1st?
No, that is the amount for March through June. It's already prorated, that's the amount.
Since we know that's the amount, why are we approving an estimated cost?
This, this state should set those rates, correct? So the state could shift those rates in upcoming year, they look at those rates and they could change them the following year.
So the state sets the rate, so no matter what we approve, we're going to pay what the state sets?
Right, correct, we could get an amendment next year.
Any other questions?
5.36?
Yes, Mr.?
How many teachers or administrators are expected to attend that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Hirsch, I couldn't hear you.
How many teachers or administrators are expected to attend this training?
Well, we haven't put the dates out yet, but I know that Ms. Hun will be gathering those volunteers. Last year, we had a significant showing of teachers in grades K through 7, so we anticipate a similar showing this summer.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing no further questions, I'm going to call for the vote, action items 5.30 to 5.37, all in favor? Items pass 5-0, thank you very much. I have an amendment on item number 5.38 in the language. The correct amount in the resolution recommendation to approve a budget transfer in the amount of 7,500. 7,500 is the correct amount, not the amount listed. With that, I'm going to ask for a second as I group items 5.38 to 5.40 together, with 5.38 being as amended. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino? Discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Mr. Hirsch? Items pass 5-0, thank you very much. I am going to take item number 6.1 by itself, may I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Seeing no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Item passes 5-0, thank you, I'm going to group items 7.1 to 7.6 together, may I have a second? Mr. Fallarino? Discussion. Seeing no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Items pass 5-0, thank you. I am taking 8.1 by itself, may I have a second? Ms. Meggie? Discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I am going to call for the vote, all in favor? All in favor? Item passes 5-0, thank you, I'm going to take 9.1 by itself, may I have a second? Mr. Keefe? Discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Item passes 5-0, thank you, I'm going to group items 10.1, 10.3 together, 10.1 through 10.3, may I have a second? Mr. Hirsch? Discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Items pass 5-0, thank you, I'm going to take 11.1 by itself, may I have a second? Mr. Fallarino? Discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor? Item passes 5-0, thank you, I'm going to group items 12.1 to 12.2 together, may I have a second? Ms. Meggie? Discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote, all in favor? Ms. Meggie? Items pass 5-0, thank you, I'm going to group items 13.1 to 13.9 together. 13.1 to 13.9 together, may I have a second? Mr. Hirsch? Discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, call for the vote, all in favor? Items pass 5-0, thank you very much. So that brings us... That brings us to the second open time. Okay, so first I'm going to start reading the same statement that the Board of Ed read at March 15th work session of last week and has been posted on the district website since then. The East Williston School District's Board of Education recognizes that we live within a diverse community with a variety of viewpoints and perspective, perspectives. As stated in our district mission, our schools exist to nurture the best in each child morally, intellectually, socially, artistically, emotionally, and physically. Specifically, we seek to encourage respect for individual human worth and acceptance of difference, an open and curious mind armed with the ability to think critically and to consider ideas in the light of values and a responsible pursuit of personal excellence and knowledge. We expect our schools to be humane and supportive environments where the growth of learners is more important than judgments of them. We expect our schools to meet the needs of the rich variety of human potentials so that each child may emerge more able to lead a happy, productive, adult life. In our classrooms, teachers use the New York State Learning Standards to plan and deliver instruction, which do not include gender identity, discussions of hormone blockers, or surgical procedures regarding gender transitioning. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is a policy of the New York State Education Department and has always been infused throughout our district's mission and vision. The goal is to treat everyone with respect. We strive to create an environment that is welcoming, safe, and affirming for all our students. Although we respect our staff's individual viewpoints and perspectives, those views do not and should not guide the teaching and learning in our classrooms. Last week, there was a book brought to the board's attention that was recently acquired for the Wheatley Library. As a result of all the questions surrounding the appropriateness of this book, I asked the superintendent to look into the book. The superintendent has shared back that our library media specialists choose texts based on age-appropriate recommendations from a variety of professional organizations, including American Library Association, School Library Journal, and Common Sense Media. These three organizations placed the book within the 13 to 18 and 16 to 18 age range. Yet, the publisher lists the audience as 18 and up. As a result of the inconsistency and disparity between the various professional organizations' age recommendations, the book was temporarily removed from circulation to simply allow for further clarification with respect to the appropriate audience for the book. The board supports its library media specialists and their continued efforts to provide a relevant literary catalog that represents a diverse student community and their varied interests. Similarly, we are confident in the district's hiring process and the recruitment and hiring of our staff. The district's hiring process utilizes a committee-based approach with numerous rounds to each process. The district does not utilize a rubric. In order to gain input from many stakeholders, the committees are made up of administrators and teachers, and when hiring administrators, parents are included on the committee. Central office does not select the members for the committee, but rather, the individual associations seek volunteers who want to participate. Committee members are provided by the Administrators Association of East Williston, the East Williston Teachers Association, and parent members are provided by the Parent Teacher Organization, known as the PTO, and Special Parent Council. When we hire staff through this process, we work to ensure that their professional values align with the mission, excuse me, and vision of our school district. In our hiring process, we do not discriminate on the basis of race, color, national origin, religion, marital status, sex, sexual orientation, age, or disability. As always, if at any time you have concerns about your child, please speak to your child's teacher and/or building principal, district directors, or our central office team. Thank you. I want to add that as a result of the scrupulous video that was released on social media, the board was questioned in regards to legal action against the association that produced, produced it or presented it on social media, as well as asking regards to a cease and desist in order to stop their operation. So I'm just going to ask council to comment on that ahead of any questions tonight.
Thank you. With respect to a cease and desist letter that would be sent by the Board of Education, it's my opinion that that would be inappropriate, given the individuals who were videotaped had no expectation of privacy at the time they were videotaped, and they are, and this is therefore also outside of the district's jurisdiction. So, in my opinion, it would not be appropriate for the district to send a cease and desist letter to the organization, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheen. Okay, with that, I'm going to turn to the questions, if you have not already submitted a slip, please do so. Oh, I was going to wait for the first question on that. So in no particular order, I'm going to turn to Ron Rolson. Excuse me. And I just remind everyone to please identify yourself by name, the community that you reside in, and your topic for the board.
My name's Ron Rolson, and I'm the president of the East Williston Teachers Association. I represent over 230 members of the professional staff here in the East Williston School District. And I stand this evening to speak of my over 20 years of experience I've had in the East Williston School District. This community of educators, colleagues, and friends have dedicated themselves to the principles that all learners, regardless of race, regardless of their religion, regardless of their ethnicity, and regardless of their identity, are treated with the same dignity and respect that we would wish for our own families and friends. I've witnessed great educators sharing the achievements of their students, whether it be a college acceptance, a scholarship award, or a reading milestone. At the same time, I've seen compassion and love shown for our students in times of loss, or showing kindness and comfort in times of great tragedy. I thought for what turned out to be a very short time of examples of the greatness that is East Williston School District, and I settled on three. Books Alive at Northside, which for myself, I witnessed for the first time last week, demonstrates the love and passion that staff at Northside have for young learners in their early formative years of education as they bring picture books to life for their students. The second is Outdoor Education Week at Willetts Road, which I myself have participated in for many years, demonstrates the staff's undying commitment to building a sense of community and togetherness by bringing students together in a shared experience away from all the distractions of our modern lives. And three, Showdown at Wheatley, which I thought to speak about, but I think we all saw Wheatley's greatness on, here for all of us to see today, whether it was the music or the sports, all the awards that the students got, or the musical, so I'll leave it at that. All three, all of these school events demonstrate the commitment and selfless nature of each individual educator in this community, where they spend countless hours away from their own families to attend to the learning needs of their students in East Williston. I believe we can all agree that teachers should be creating self-welcoming spaces for all students, and we do that. I believe we can all agree that teachers should be learning more about the needs of their students through the expertise of their colleagues or professional development, and we do that here. I believe that we can all agree that teachers should be identifying positive ways to remove barriers to student learning, and we do that. I believe that we can all agree that teachers should be closing out the noise of the outside world and focusing on every child as individual and unique learners while in our classrooms, and we do that. I'd like to close by thanking the Board of Education and the administration of the East Williston School District.
It's okay, Mr. Rolson, I have to cut you off because we're going to stick with the three minutes.
I'm just going to finish my statement.
Mr. Rolson, I have to stick... Just going to say, East Williston School District...
Just going to say, East Wilston School District is not only supporting the needs of every student, but also making staff growth, collegiality, and development a key component of our professional lives in this district.
Mr. Rolson, thank you.
I'm not going to stop.
Mr. Rolson, I welcome you to take out a second open time slip, Mr. Rolson, please.
I would like to thank the amazing men and women of the East Wilston School District who I've, who have challenged me, supported me, and taught me invaluable lessons over the course of my twenty years as an educator.
I appreciate, I appreciate the fact that everybody has something to say. I'm just going to ask that everybody please respect the process. We will do our best to allow for the full questions in the time allotment accordingly, please. We're not here to shut anyone off, we're not here to shut anyone down. Everybody will have a chance to speak, please just do it respectfully, that's all we ask. This Board of Education has committed their time, they're all volunteers, we're here to serve on behalf of the community, and we represent the community and are happy to listen to, same. Just be patient, we will allow everyone to speak. We just don't want to hear the yelling out in the audience. Everybody will have a chance, thank you. With that, I have Marcelina Keters.
Good evening. So obviously, it seems like a lot of parents are for the same reason here, and although I am not prepared, because literally I learned about this today, I do have a problem originally with book content and educational content that is provided for our children. And I would like to just show, like, I want to touch on two subjects. The one that is, our children are being provided with horror stories, which is something that I personally think it's detrimental to their mentality, especially at a young age. My son came back, my nine-year-old son came back with a book that on the cover page it said, "Dark content, disturbing, frightened, scary, horror-frightening, creepy." And that was also part of a, another, an author of another book titled, "The Day I Swept My Dad For Two Goldfish." If this type of content is taught to our children at this young age, I don't know how anybody can expect for normalcy, because we already are, have, we already live in difficulty world to begin with, and loading our children with such heavy content is only detrimental. And just if, for anybody that didn't know, didn't see, let me just find this picture. So the book that we're really, probably everybody came here for, I'm actually going to read the passage so everybody can understand. If our children can hear it, then why can't, then I actually want everybody to understand why we are here. Fast forward, "We've been dating for two months. We've made out, we've had sex, we've moved on to sexting at work. I got a new strap-on harness today. I can't wait to put it on you, it will fit my favorite dildo perfectly. You are going to look so hot. I can't wait to have your cock in my mouth. I'm going to give you the blowjob, the blowjob of your life."
Yeah, Marcelina.
What?
Stick with the Board, you're presenting to the Board, not to the public. Just keep going.
Well, I'm just reading what our children are exposed to. This is, exactly, this is disturbing, that's what, that's the problem. I, I would never choose that for my child, and I will never allow for my children to read. So if adults can't hear that, I hear the buzz, last word, if adults can't hear that, why our children are being promoted? It's not a book sitting on a shelf somewhere in the middle of nowhere. It's actually right promoted in the middle of, right there, on, on the, on the book display.
Thank you, Marcelina. So I am going to share some words.
You can take a look, this is, this is from the library.
So clearly, the Board of Education is well aware that challenges to curriculum content have the potential to tear communities apart. On the one hand, on the one hand, advocates of banning certain books maintain that children in grades K through twelve will be harmed if we don't protect them from inappropriate materials. Opponents are equally heated in insisting that censorship of books and other curriculum materials violates the academic freedoms and diversity of thought that's protected by the U.S. Constitution. As stated earlier, the Board of Education represents all of its constituents, no matter what, their personal point of view. The Board shared in its statement that our library media specialists choose texts based on age-appropriate recommendations from a variety of professional organizations including American Library Association, School Library Journal, and Common Sense Media. That said, that said, the Board of Education recognizes that challenges to library books, excuse me, that challenges to library books involve a process that balances an individual's right to be heard on the issue and the First Amendment rights of students to receive library materials. In two thousand and three, the Board of Education adopted Board Policy Number 1420 and Board Regulations 1420-R. That established a process to review challenges to the district's selection of library materials. Recognizing that this can be a very long and detailed process, it would be the Board's recommendation that ahead of anyone moving forward with challenging the curricula, that interested parties contact the individual school principals first with an attempt to understand how the decisions are made and the recommendations behind them. Of course, our directors and central office administrators are always available for further conversation.
One more thing, it's not about being against, but school is for education, not indoctrination. And actually, I purposely put that shirt on today, not because I bought it today, but because I support freedom of speech and freedom of whoever who wants to be, but I don't support indoctrination of my children. So this is, this is, I'm, I'm okay with anybody.
Karen Yan.
Hi, I'm Karen Yan, I'm from the East Wilston neighborhood. I'm seeking clarification. In the district-wide email by the superintendent on March fourteenth, it stated there is no relationship between EdCamp LI and LGB Teach. I was shown a tweet that appears to be written by a current East Wilston faculty, which reads, "What a great day, LGB Teach Forum at Jericho Middle School and EdCamp LI collaboration will be awesome." This tweet seems to be in contradiction to the superintendent's email. Could you please provide clarification on this?
Karen, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to, I'm just going to have to ask you to repeat the question, I'm sorry. Stop, please, guys, guys.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Just repeat the question, Ms. Karen.
I'm just seeking clarification. In the district-wide email by the superintendent on March fourteenth, it stated there is no relationship between EdCamp LI and LGB Teach. I was shown a tweet that appears to be written by a current East Wilston faculty, and it reads the following, "What a great day, LGB Teach Forum at Jericho Middle School and EdCamp LI, meeting at four, collaboration will be awesome. This tweet seems to be in contradiction to the superintendent's email, and I'm just looking for clarification."
Bear with me a second, please. So we're not here to comment on the workings of EdCamp Long Island, but we will certainly comment on the workings of our staff, okay? And as it relates, so I just, I just feel it's important just to share this particular part, and then Karen, if I missed something, please follow up. So our district administrators and staff participate in and lead many professional organizations with art for professional development opportunities. Guys, I could, I... Here's what, here's what we're going to do. Again, we are happy to answer the questions, I just said... Guys, I'm doing our best to answer the questions, we, if there's another, here's how it's going to work, if there's another shout-out, the Board is going to adjourn to executive session. We are committed to staying here all night, we're committed to staying here, we're committed to staying here all night, and I said to Ms. Yan, please allow us to read this, and if you have a follow-up question to what I'm reading, please share accordingly. That's all we're asking. If there are shout-outs from the audience, we are going to have to adjourn the meeting. We don't want to adjourn the meeting, we want to try to get through all the topics tonight. All we're asking is to please show some respect and be patient, and if you have follow-up questions and you want to bring it to the Board table, please bring it. Our district administrative staff participate in and lead many professional organizations which offer professional development opportunities that are available to educators. Some examples of our administrators holding leadership positions in other professional organizations include Dr. Gately's seat on multiple Nassau County Councils, excuse me, most, Dr. Gately's seat on multiple Nassau County Council Superintendent's committees and the doctoral advisory board at Malloy University, Mr. Chemnitzer's role in the leadership of the Association of Supervisors of Educational Technology Asset, and both his and, his and Ms. Weinberg's leadership in the National Association of School Technologists, Ms. Costangui's leadership with the Association of School Business Officials of New York, Dr. Maz's leadership in the Long Island Skills Consortium, Dr. Tesail's leadership in Nassau County Associate Mathematics Supervisors, Ms. Pace's leadership in Long Island STEM leadership, Ms. Tripp's leadership on the Long Island English Speakers of Other Languages Committee, and Ms. Scuturo, Ms. Scutro, Mr. Scuturo's leadership in Section Eight Athletics. These examples are just from our leadership team alone and does not include the positions that our teachers hold within professional organizations. We share all these because there's never been a concern brought that EdCamp Long Island or any of these organizations posed a conflict of interest, and we want to highlight that it is common practice for our educational leaders to participate and lead in professional organizations. Karen, with that said, please.
I, I guess I'm just still a little confused. I just, I, no, I, I don't agree with the people back here. I support Dr., Mr. Rolson's email, statement, I do, and I, I, I don't want to be associated with that, I just was confused. I, I believed in the email, I celebrated the email Dr. Gately sent out, and I applauded her, her spirit of her email, I do. But I just got confused when I was shown that tweet, because I really thought that, that whatever video was shown, they sort of like stamped EdCamp Long Island's, um, thing on there.
No problem. So I just shared that in the context of what our leadership does, and there's several questions that are going to come up in regards to tweets and the opposition to what is going on in the classroom, and of course, tying it all together. I am going to allow our administration to answer that specifically in regards to your question, I just thought it was important to add context to that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Gately.
Thank you, Ms. Yan. As I mentioned in my email, LGB Teach is a completely separate organization to EdCamp Long Island. It is owned and operated by a different individual who is not part of the planning team, nor has ever been part of the planning team of EdCamp Long Island. So I believe the tweet you're referencing is from two thousand and fourteen, and it was from Mr. Chemnitzer, who worked in another school district at the time and visited Jericho Middle School in order to learn about GSAs and how Jericho Middle School was one of the first schools to do that. And I believe that he was referencing an after-school event that EdCamp was hosting, nothing in collaboration with one another, but he was referring to collaboration among the colleagues that he was looking forward to seeing at the EdCamp event. If I have misspoke, please share. Does that help you understand, Karen?
Okay, yes, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Karen. Michelle, Michelle Mazur-Groskow.
Good evening, Michelle Mazur-Groskow. I want to say first that I support our teachers one hundred percent. My issue tonight is with the Board and with the administration, okay? I am here to give you a report card, and I'm giving you a D. I'm close to an F, but I'm going to tell you why I'm giving you a D. We are devastated, disappointed, disillusioned, distraught, and most of all, distrustful. You are deflecting, defensive, disappointing, dismissive, derelict in your duty, disrespectful, and most of all, dishonest. The statement, Mr. Camberg, what you just said about the fact that nobody has ever brought to your attention, the conflict between EdCamp Long Island and our administration is totally false. In June of last year, Mrs. Cazalino, Mrs. Blue, and I sent you a letter expressing our deep concern about the relationship between EdCamp Long Island and our administration, and the fact that our top three administrators, two hires last year, are from EdCamp Long Island. You talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, which I support one hundred percent, it's mandated. My politics are liberal, just so everyone knows, we know that there are people here with different politics, however, we seem to agree on this, which is, you are not practicing diversity in your hiring. You are hiring from one group, one homogenous group, and that is an issue. You state repeatedly that parents are involved in the hiring. We have been on hiring committees, we were disappointed, we don't feel our recommendations were taken, we expressed that, okay? We wrote you that letter last year, we wrote you a letter on Friday referencing that letter. Your response to us today, we demanded an investigation into the situation that we are currently dealing with, you dismissed it. In fact, you basically said, "We don't need an investigation because we know that we are teaching what we're supposed to be teaching," okay? You can't not have an investigation. The other two school districts involved in this situation have put out statements that they are investigating, okay? The person who made the most controversial statements in the videotapes presented by Project Veritas are colleagues of yours, they are co-founders of EdCamp Long Island, they were recently, as recent as October of two thousand and twenty-two, were in a picture with you in front of Willetts Road School in Newsday, showing, "Hey, we're EdCamp Long Island." I'm talking about David Casamentu, who was a colleague of yours for more than a decade. He stated that there is a rubric among the assistant superintendents for hiring to keep conservatives out of administrations. I don't know how you can't investigate when our assistant superintendent, I'm sorry, Mr. Chemnitzer, but I just have to say it, you're a colleague of his, and it is hard to imagine that there wasn't some conversation, that you don't have some knowledge of this, okay? I have one to say, I don't want to use my time, but the bottom line is, the fact that you are not investigating is shocking. When a cop rightfully shoots someone, he's investigated. When someone is harassed in an office, they may be totally innocent, but they are investigated. We ask for an investigation not to prove that you've done something wrong, but to make sure that you haven't, okay? Go back to the D, do something, do the right thing.
Ellen Giannis.
Good evening. In the light of the recent videos from Project Veritas, I find myself questioning if I can continue to trust this school district with my children. These videos revealed to me that there are teachers in school districts all over Nassau County being encouraged to teach a covert agenda to their students. The covert agenda of gender ideology has no approved curriculum with age-appropriate -- The covert agenda of gender ideology has no approved curriculum with age appropriate content. It has no parental consent or input. And most importantly, it has no safeguards in place to prevent child sexual grooming. The videos suggest that if a teacher had tenure, that meant they have more freedom and the protection to go rogue. Furthermore, the videos suggest that teachers begin this covert agenda at a young age. My child is in kindergarten. His mind is a sponge. I need to know that I can trust my child in your classrooms. I am his parent, not his teacher, not the school board. I am his mother. As his parent, it's up to me to decide when it's appropriate for him to discuss these real world, personal issues. If a covert agenda is being taught without my consent, then you are infringing on my parental rights. While neighboring school districts have since issued letters of contempt for what these videos reveal and have forced those accountable to resign, this school board tonight sent an email stating, quote, "They support the strength and inclusive, inclusivity of their curriculum and the dedicated, talented faculty and staff that lead and teach it." I think that's wonderful. And from my, what I've seen and what my son's experienced so far, he loves school. He loves his teachers. But the fact that you have not yet opened an investigation and jumped to a conclusion that there was no foul play concerns me. The school board's statement says the principal's email was taken out of context. I need that context explained. We deserve an explanation. The school board's emails was intentionally vague and it did not sit well with me. According to the New York State School Boards Association, a school board member takes on one of the most important citizens' responsibilities, overseeing the education of the community's youth. Now, I would think that having been sworn into your elected seat, that you'd feel obligated and responsible to investigate and find out what exactly is happening under your watch. But the fact that you've publicly jumped to that conclusion that it's all good here, there's nothing to see, shows me that you're grossly incompetent. It shows me that you do not have the best interests of our children at your heart. It shows me you do not respect the community that you've sworn to serve. And the fact is that the context of these videos need further investigation. Without that, this community cannot and will not move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm sorry. Merrill Forden.
Good evening. As a member of the East Williston community for over 30 years and as a parent of a Wheatley graduate, I want all students to have the same outstanding education and support that my daughter received. All students should have the freedom to be themselves and to pursue their dreams. The mission statement of the East Williston School District is an impressive pursuit with its ultimate goal of meeting the needs of the rich variety of human potential so each child may emerge more able to lead a happy, productive adult life. The teachers and support staff in East Williston are committed to that end. They do everything possible to make sure all students are welcomed, supported, respected, and provided with every opportunity to learn and to thrive. In the past several days, Project Veritas has released several secretly recorded videos of educators in professional group settings discussing nuanced and important student issues around gender and sexuality. These videos have been selectively edited so it appears that educators are colluding to indoctrinate our children. However, what these videos actually show are educators doing their jobs. Teachers making good faith attempts to serve their students and communities while expressing caution and awareness that these are very sensitive issues. To be clear, these topics are only made controversial because of what, in my opinion, Project Veritas and its allies are doing to stoke division. They threaten our students, the cohesion of our community, and the integrity of our profession. Even worse, they, they threaten the safety of our teachers and their families. The real purpose behind the positions taken by Project Veritas have been discussed in the public forum for quite some time. They've been accused of using deceptive and manipulative practices in pursuit of their political agendas. In 2022, they were found guilty of violating wiretapping laws and fraudulently representing itself, misrepresenting itself. The tactics of Project Veritas have led to division and disruption within communities, which is obvious here, and, um, yeah. I'm here to stand up and I'm here to say, not where I live, not in my community. The East Williston School District is a community for all. Every student is valued. I'm also here to ask the Board of Education to publicly affirm that our community values are to support every child. And I'm also asking you to affirm that you support every member of the East Williston School faculty and staff.
Thank you. Ellie Kay. Ellie, where are you? Sorry, there's someone.
Good evening, all. Ellie Constantados from East Williston. I have to say directly in response to the last speaker, thank you. We do want to be represented, all of us. Each and every one of us here wants to be represented, but unfortunately, we're not. We feel that we're not represented, that there is a certain class of people that are, and then there are others where, hey, we can just trample on their parental rights. Well, let me tell you something. I send my children to school each and every day under, in loco parentis. That means that this school district has the responsibility to step in the shoes of the parents. Well, I don't trust right now that my parental rights are being secured. And I'm sure that many of us here today, as I've never seen a packed house before, also don't trust it. And the statement regarding the books here, nobody's here to ban books. We're not. We do agree with the fact that there are certain books, but the matter is age appropriate. An 18 year old's book should not be in our school district. And then I sit here and I'm holding before you another book that, wait. Let me look through this. There's no stamp that says Wheatley School. There's no stamp that says Willetts Road. I'm not okay with this book. This book was handed to a child, a young child. How do I know that what is in the library, which obviously there are issues with, is okay? Also, how do I know that one specific rogue teacher is bringing in books that are not okay for me? What am I to do to oversee this? And that is where I look at the five of you. The five of you are here to oversee this school district. We do not trust that this is going on here. We do not feel comfortable in sending our children to a school where we're finding this again and again. And as many times, and I do believe that Project Veritas does clip and piece their things together, but what was said was said. And we have to know from now on that our school district is safe and secure for all of us, not just a specific few.
S. Juarez.
Members of the board, Dr. Gately, Ms. Costangui, Mr. Chemnitzer, Mr. Shaheen. Ah, hang on. I'm the parent of two children in the high school and one child who will be entering kindergarten this year. I did not know which book was being referred to until the parent mentioned it. And I looked at the book, let's talk about it. I, um, I, I, I'm not sure how to express. Let me be very clear. I, I, I work with many colleagues. I work in advertising. I work in advertising. My job is to sell you things which you do not know and to influence opinion without you realizing what's happening. This is my job. And we know the power of words, the power of framing, power of imagery, everything, everything. That which is said and that which is unsaid is extremely powerful and that is the job that I do. I work with many colleagues who have their own preferences and stated choices about their gender identity and sexual orientation. They are adults. They are expressing their choice out of free will and choice. These are adults. I looked at this book. There are words that I don't know the meaning for. Mr. President, Madam Superintendent, Dr. Gately. Please, this age of 13 to 18, that is an age where the brain is most fertile. It is the brain that needs to be nourished, not the body. I know when we enter into this realm of, shall we say, Baywatch and so on, we, as a human, our primal instincts kick in. And I can assure you, with 20 years of marriage behind me, nothing else matters in those moments of, let's say, desire, if you will. This is not the age. This is an age where we should be elevating their minds and intellect. I. I, 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 and I'm, I'm telling you, as, as an immigrant to this country, as an immigrant to this country, I cannot hire an American because I find that they have very poor work ethic, extremely weak fundamentals. And most, most of the, most of the students, they have a very short attention span. They are not capable of, let's say, either the drive or hard work. And we are throwing more distraction into the mix. Please, this is a very inappropriate book for an age when their minds should be elevated. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ashwin. Love it, Karen, I can't hear you. Mr. Giannis Michael.
Uh, Mike Giannis, East Williston. So that was my wife, a couple people ago, Ellen Giannis. So my wife is Asian and her family had to flee fascist and communist countries. So they really value being here in America. Personally, on my side of the family, we had people that were occupied by Nazis. So diversity is not just something that's on a poster, on a frame in my house. It literally is my house, so I'll start with that. Diversity is important and we literally live it. My house, my house any given night at a dinner table is probably more diverse than this table up front. So that said, I have a couple of concerns I'll get into. Obviously, the biggest concern was around the video released, right? And we keep hearing things out of context. All, everything I'm about to say now, all my questions have nothing to do with DEI or diversity. It has to do with the transparency element, right? I'm not gonna repeat what a lot of people already said. We already got a lot of those points across. But a lot of the concerns are that a fellow colleague of many people at this table here said that there are covert curriculums. So obviously, I hope by now, tonight, you guys have gotten the sense that there is a, maybe a slight sense of distrust. Slight, high, medium, low, can we, level, yeah, high, okay. So I think it's now the board and the district's job to prove to us that there is no covert curriculum. An email is not gonna do the trick. A tweet is not gonna do the trick. A PowerPoint deck is not gonna do the trick. We need to be proven, prove yourself to us, prove to us that there is no covert curriculum. All of this stuff we're saying is out of context, edited. Prove to us that that is not the case so we can restore trust. Because right now, that trust is broken. And when we, when we see things like in these emails that, uh, you know, so and so said this at a previous district, right? One of the administrators in this district said, watch the video if you haven't seen it. We don't like, we don't, our mission is to not hire certain types of people, those people being Catholics. If that's in regards to the previous district, I'm not sure how that doesn't change the reflection on that individual's character or how that's out of context. Not a very inclusive statement that I hope can be clarified. And again, prove to us that all of these things are false narratives. It's very hard to, you know, see and hear something that's real unless maybe, I mean, AI deep fake technology is, is really good these days and maybe that's what Veritas did. I don't know. But prove to us that this is not the case. In addition to that, you know, I think it's important, if, if there is a Parents' Bill of Rights, I think something already exists. Take all of these concerns and amend that. Amend that with the input of parents. And if there's a subject that, whatever it is, I don't care if it's nuclear physics, you don't get to have a covert subject because a covert subject implies a secret. And a secret does not get to be had between an adult that works for a public school district and my child. The last. I'm gonna add one more thing. The same video, I don't think you could take this out of context, but I'm all open to an explanation and investigation. The same administrator, fellow colleague, fellow co-founder of Ed Camp LI speaks to one of the groups that was said in the email to be unassociated as a great activist, lives that activism every day. So if we're going to educational seminars, I assume it's to apply in the educational setting. In my professional job, I go to seminars not for how to do juggling, when that's not my job. It usually has to do with my job. So if we're speaking to activists, oh, such a great activist, this, this and that, do we have a hard line and policy against activism? I honestly don't understand why activism, politics, social things on any side is a part of anything educational at this point, unless you're maybe in college. I mean, I thought teachers are supposed to teach and not bring any of this into the classroom. That's what I remember, at least from the New York City school system as a kid. You never knew how a teacher voted. You never knew what they thought about anything. You knew the subject and that was about it. So again, I think it's a matter of how do you guys restore trust? And I'm putting that burden on the board and the district.
Mr. Giannis, I just want to add. So first of all, I know you've spoken many times at board meetings and we do appreciate your comments, so thank you. And please, what I'm about to share is not to deflect or be defensive in any means. I just say it in regards to your comments themselves. We always, as parents, okay, many of us are parents in this room, we always say we are our children's best advocates. And I think the place that it starts, please, I'm not deflecting from the board or any other points that you've brought tonight. The place that it always starts is with our parents. And if there was something that was of concern in the classroom, if there was something of concern in the classroom, we would hope and certainly request and actually ask that that concern be brought forward through, of course, the teacher to start and then the principal. I, I don't need you to respond to it, I'm just adding in context.
Yes, but I'd like to respond to that, right? Because I, I can understand that statement with a 10 year old that maybe is a little bit more aware with what's going on to come home and communicate.
I understand, I understand. This is a K through 12 district and I share in the broad strokes as parents and advocates. You know, we, this district works very hard to publish and share what goes on in the classroom. It doesn't mean that every minute of what goes on is shared, but our staff does work very hard. In particular, at our elementary and middle schools, work very hard to share. So I just simply add that in context of your comments, that it really does, of course, always start as parents. We are a district of parent choice. always start as parents, we are a district of parent choice, okay? There are many things here where parents can simply say, I don't want that. We don't push, we don't demand, we don't inflect anything on, on our children from the point of you have to do this, okay? Parents have the right to opt out, whether it's something as simple as open campus, whether it's simple as something, I want my child on the website, whether it's something as simple as I don't want to read, my child to read that book, all right? We are a district of parent choice and I just think it's important to share. Please, it's not necessarily a response to your question, but I just thought it was a good point to share that accordingly. So thank you, Mr. Giannis.
All right.
Thank you. Elia Prizzata.
I'm a resident of Roswell Heights, have been here for over 20 years. Three kids, one already graduated from Wheatley. I'm also a public school teacher at a district in Suffolk County. So from a teacher perspective, I support you, I applaud you, I know what it's like in a class. I had a student one year who I taught in seventh grade, who was Kevin, and came to me in eighth grade as Taylor. And told me, please call me Taylor, it's not on the roster, but please call me Taylor. I said, what is it to me? I can call you whatever you want so you feel safe and loved and protected and cared for in my classroom. If that's what you need to feel safe so you can learn, so that I can teach you, that is what I will do for you. I understand having kids walking into a library and seeing representation of themselves, whether it's through different religious books, different gender identity books, because then they feel like they belong somewhere, right? And obviously, everything starts at home first because that's where all the initial background and morals and values and principles come from. The books in question, the many books in question, take it to another level. It's one thing to have books about, you know, basic gender identity questions, valuing, valuing yourself, respecting yourself, respecting others, seeking help, and it's quite another to have those graphic images, the pornography, and you just take it to another level. But I think we all need reminders, I need reminders, my husband, we all need reminders, that the one thing besides these books that we have in the libraries that hopefully maybe we can get out, maybe we can make a committee of parents and teachers and administrators to look through some of these books and maybe agree on what can go in and what can't go in. But there's one thing that our kids have from a very, very young age, I'm guilty of it, and it's this. They have more on this and worse. I'm just saying, I'm just saying that they are with this device as I am.
Ms. Prizzata.
Twenty four, please don't interrupt.
Just, Ms. Prizzata, just keep talking to the board. And please, everyone else, just please continue to show respect.
They're, they're just with this device 24/7. I know, I'm not agreeing with the book, I'm not agreeing with any, you know, hidden agendas. Is it important to make a child feel safe in your classroom? Yes, 100%, 100%. But those books, no. And, you know, we have to just be mindful that this is also, this has a lot of stuff on it.
Ms. Trzynski, Denise.
I have a statement to read. If I have to go fill out another form, I will. Thank you for your time. The past week, emotions have run high because if you take academics, athletics, clubs, et cetera away, at the core, you are the caretaker of our minor children. Some weeks, they spend more waking time with you than their parents. As parents yourselves, I'm sure you would agree that the slightest hint of dishonesty or covert plans is completely unacceptable, given the role you have in their lives. I believe that EdCamp Long Island started out as an opportunity for teachers across the island to share best practices. But as with anything in life, it can follow a bell curve. The center, the large majority, just want to learn, to teach their subject area to the best of their ability and go home, though the smaller groups on, on either side usually make the most noise and cause the most issues. I believe your organization has been hijacked by this fringe. We've been told by EdCamp Long Island founders that they have no affiliation with LGBTCH, though EdCamp Long Island founders have social media posts, as we know, dating back to 2014. When I spoke with an administrator, I was told that hashtags like hashtag EdCamp Long Island are free and you can't control who uses it. You do have the power, that's not true, because you do have the power to disassociate or untag your personal or organization account. That's when the at sign is used before your name. If a morally defunct organization tagged my personal account on social media, I would not let that stay. I would remove all indication that I was associated with them. It is not just one member of the East Williston staff that is tagged by LGBTCH or has tagged back to LGBTCH. The East Williston teacher contract is with the taxpayers of this community. You, as our Board of Ed, are the enforcers of that contract. Article 24 of the contract states that all teachers shall complete 12 hours of professional development per school year, with half of those hours counted towards salary advancement. You can correct me if I'm wrong. The EdCamp Long Island founders state that the EdCamp Long Island model was founded on principles of participant-driven, self-directed professional learning. In keeping with this philosophy, sessions, sessions are not pre-submitted, predetermined, vetted, endorsed, or promoted by EdCamp Long Island. I confirmed this week, or last week, that with Central Office, that EdCamp Long Island conferences are in the professional development catalog. How can these be used to satisfy, satisfy this contractual requirement? How can this be sufficient when the founders claim they have no idea what sessions are being presented? The district doesn't know if it's research-based or even presented by a certified educator. A new hashtag was created over this weekend, hashtag stand up for EdCamp Long Island. There was a pic, should I go over and fill out a new form?
I say yes.
Oh, okay. No, I thought it went off. A new hashtag was created over the weekend, hashtag stand up for Long Island, for, stand up for EdCamp Long Island. There was a picture posted from EdCamp Long Island Conference. The comment reads, if you ever encounter a fool who questions the dedication of educators, show them this picture. And underneath it says, Saturday, 8:00 AM, full parking lot, completely voluntary. That's not entirely true. The educator, and I don't deny the dedication of the educators, but they're fulfilling their contracted contractual education hours. It's not voluntary. At an Oc-, at an October EdCamp Long Island Conference, a session was offered that encouraged teachers to introduce hormone blockers to children, covertly insert controversial ideas into curriculum, identifying and counseling students with gender sexuality issues, and lying and deceiving parents when communicating with them. Assistant Secretary of Health Rachel Levine, the highest-ranking transgender official in U.S. history, was quoted last week saying, gender-affirming care is medical care, gender-affirming care is mental health care, and literally, gender-affirming care is suicide prevention care. Any East Williston teacher, or any teacher in, anywhere for that matter, who may be dabbling in these areas is dangerously working outside their certification area. EdCamp Long Island founders claim that the events are free and rely on sponsorship of local businesses and educational associations, that they receive no financial support from wealthy donors such as Gates Foundation or any other large corporation. Those social media posts created by founders show banners thanking their sponsors, the likes of PSENG and Galactic. Those are large companies. I have inquired if any of the EdCamp Long Island sponsors that have been listed have had purchase orders granted to them from East Williston, while EdCamp Long Island founders have been in decision-making roles at the East Williston School District. I asked that question on Friday. I didn't get an answer when I reply, when I followed up on it. I was told today that to get that list, that has to be a foil item, which I'll send in. One EdCamp Long Island founder is on video saying that one thing about Alyssa Waters, the founder of LGBTCH, that is different from any other person she has worked with, she lives that activism and that purpose every day. Webster defines activism as a doctrine or practice that emphasizes direct vigorous action, especially in support of or opposition to one side of a controversial issue. Why would a district leader praise an educator who is using her district paytime to support one side of a controversial issue? Why would a district leader praise an educator who supports using tenure as a tool to defy school-building rules and parents' wishes? A recent social media post from a fifth-grade class at Willets describes a book that was just read to students. That's under it, it says, a story about activism, love, hope, and equality. There is that word again, activism. This all sounds very close to the EdCamp Long Island founders' advice to sprinkle it in. The district was recently made aware of a book in their library that many felt was inappropriate. One of the answers we received to our concern was for us to contact the librarian to discuss our issues. President Truman had a sign on his desk that read, the buck stops here, here. I can thank my social, high school social studies teacher for remembering that. While the book was removed from circulation, pending review, no action was given to the other controversial books that administration was made aware of. These books have been talked about through many districts, I would assume in librarian shack groups, and even an article in the New York Post last week, yet the administration all claimed they knew nothing about it. Our district has 16 positions total between directors and superintendents. That's one administer, administrator per approximately 103 students. More management than our district had when I first came here, but we're supposed to believe that no one knows what's going on. Purchases in school districts require purchase orders and bid lists and typically several approval signatures. Are we to believe that the librarian works alone and has sole decision-making that is unchecked? If so, I hope there are plans to change that. One of the books that you were made aware of is the story of a young boy who attends summer camp. One of the pages depicts him cowering in a corner while he's surrounded by his adult The book is described as telling a difficult story with humor, compassion, and love. I would say it tells a story of grooming, pedophilia, and the rape of a minor. Even scarier is the audience suggestion is to be read by minors with adult guidance. The district temporarily removed one book from the library, though the book I just described is still available, I guess just in time for camp season. I'm under no belief that my children do not have access to inappropriate material on the internet. We have all taught our children since kindergarten that teachers should be listened to and the school is always right. Pedophilia and rape gets approval and validity when the school provides it. I feel the authority we have given to our children is being used against us. While I do not agree with the practice of misrepresenting oneself, or while legal in New York, the taping of conversation without both parties' agreement, and I will agree that parts are edited, there are significant portions of that video that are not edited. You are asking us to deny what we see and hear. You are asking us to believe that 100% of that tape is a lie. Even if I concede that 95% is a lie, the remaining 5% is still very troublesome. I would ask the Board of Ed to revisit East Williston School District's association with EdCamp Long Island and no longer accept EdCamp Long Island sessions to be used to satisfy contractual professional, professional development hours. There are, there are, there are inconsistencies and inappropriate sessions offered. I was told by administration and the board, it's just one session. Is the board really okay with that? I assure you, explanations like, I don't know, that was a while ago, it's not what it looks like on that video, wouldn't get you through one of Dr. Clapper's parent meetings. Can we hold ourselves to the same expectations as we do our children? Two EdCamp founders keep referring to this work, work that if they implemented at their home districts, they would be fired, that parents, especially conservative, right-wing parents, are an obstacle to doing this work. For the life of me, I can't figure out what district work both sides of the aisle would have an issue with. All sentences have a subject and a verb, two plus two is always four. It is my hope and expectation that the district will be teaching students how to think, how to do research, research and develop their own opinions, not what to think. You know how to do this. I recall a Willets Road social studies teacher that introduced discussion topics in their class and taught the kids to have civil debate and conversations stating their opinions. Thoughts and research, he, I'm sorry. What a lesson in understanding how others think and an opportunity to develop your own opinions. I recall asking my son what views the teacher inserted into the conversation, and he said, you know what, Mom, I have no idea what this teacher felt about it. This teacher never tells us what they think. Maybe you should have this teacher provide your professional development hours. Because what a boring world we would live in if we all robotically felt the same way on every issue. It doesn't sound very inclusive to me. You, the Board of Ed, we elected you to be our voices. Look at all the people in this room tonight. How you, how can you continue with business as usual when so many of your community are unhappy? And I prefer when you, when you refer to us, you don't say your constituents, you say my neighbor. My neighbor who loves their children as much as I do is unhappy and doesn't trust the school district I lead. When it comes to our children, the slightest chance of inappropriate, inappropriateness or dishonesty is too much. Raising children is difficult enough, the devil is so often at the door. I desperately want my school district to be an entity I can trust. After all, you have responsibility for my kid the better part of 180 days a year. Thank you.
Eileen, are you speaking for your husband?
I don't need him.
No, he, he filled out his own slip.
Yeah, because we thought we were going to go over time, but I'm fine.
So you've got, so I'm removing him.
I appreciate it.
I'm removing him and using your hand, okay.
By the way, we love you, teachers, like, really love you, so. I'm frustrated today as someone whose parents escaped the Soviet Union's propaganda regime. Growing up, I was indoctrinated to love communism. My parents fled to America and I'm forever grateful for opportunities provided. I cherish this diverse and inclusive community where my three children love and include others, regardless of gender, race, religion, sexual orientation. We love everyone. However, these kind words, diversity and inclusion, have been hijacked by radicals. You see, I actually read every single page of the New York State Education Department's Diversity Equity Inclusion Framework, DEI. It's a 12-page document that anyone can download. This framework claims to promote racial justice but ends up making race, skin color, gender, and sex orientation a priority. Direct words from DEI framework, I quote, "We suggest that the dominant caste must work harder to foster radical empathy," end quote. What? Who is the dominant caste? The whites? The Indians? The Asians? The Muslims? Is this what we want the children to learn? The DEI document then continues to state that we should infuse this ideology into every aspect of education and turn students into agents of social change, in other words, into social justice warriors. Antifa comes to mind. Soviets did the same thing when they indoctrinated me into promoting communism. Further, the DEI framework suggests hiring teachers based on race and gender rather than merit and experience, which goes against the principles of equal opportunity, actually. Per the document itself, on page two. Per the document itself, on page 2, provides the reason why they created this DEI framework, and I'll quote, "The tragic unjust killings of Black and Brown individuals by law enforcement and the subsequent need for genuine and elastic racial justice." In areas like New York City and California where DEI has been championed, schools have descended into despair. A child is pure. A child does not know race. A child does not know skin color. If we focus on race, gender, and sexual orientation as the most critical aspects of a person's identity, we'll create unproductive young adults who will be obsessed with seeking out oppression. Board, we must stand against harmful ideologies and advocate for a more inclusive but merit-based education system. In an email to you, Board members, in August of 2022, I shared my concerns about the New York State DEI policy in our schools. I asked if it's implemented here. The Board responded back to me in the email stating that DEI policy had not been adopted here. I have the email. However, in an email on March 15th, the Board made a statement to all of us that DEI policy is infused throughout our schools. This inconsistency has left me puzzled. If DEI is present here, I ask you, do you agree with New York State DI policy that our police is disproportionately targeting Blacks? Do you support hiring based on race, gender quotas over merit and experience? And do you endorse transforming students into social justice warriors? I'm also aware that the president of the Board is a Long Island School Board rep for the Committee to New York State Education Department Commissioner. I ask you, do you agree with the DI policy as it's written by New York State? Transparency is crucial. It means someone does not conceal or tell lies. Yet, following the Project Veritas videos, our administration's Twitter accounts suddenly became restricted. And their nonprofit, Ed Camp Long Island's website went blank. The Ed Camp Long Island's Twitter went blank. You claimed Ed Camp Long Island and LGBT Teach are two separate entities, but there's plenty of evidence online that they collaborate. In fact, there's even another tweet where our superintendent's husband stating that our superintendent is choosing workshops for LGBT Teach. If you need that tweet, I could send it to you. I'm almost done. In January 2023, you denied hiring an equity officer, but during the same meeting, you hired a consultant specializing in educational equity. Then, same month in January, another resident asked you if gender ideology is in our schools, and officials denied its presence. Yet, we saw the same book that we're talking about and other books available to kids as young as 12. We saw gender pronouns forms in kindergarten. And, something that shocked me, the school permitted a gender and sex orientation survey to go out to kids as young as 12 without obtaining parental consent beforehand, violating federal law. David Casamento, Ed East Meadows Administrator, Ed Camp Long Island co-founder, admitted to weeding out conservatives during hiring. Question for you guys, does our administration, who shares the same nonprofit with Casamento, with our principal, Mr. Weiner, hold the same views? Do you not find it troublesome that our newly hired high school principal is also a co-founder of the same nonprofit? Was he the most qualified for the position? With their longstanding association, should our administration have recused themselves from Mr. Weiner's hiring process? I applaud teaching tolerance and inclusivity of anyone. I will never accept anything less of my children. I do not applaud doing things in covert and hidden methods. No parent should ever be concerned with their child being pushed by agenda. I want to say I love our teachers. Excellent education should be the priority. Teach children to become productive members of society with marketable skills, who can communicate well, focus on critical thinking, problem-solving, and you do it well. But get rid of this bias. Don't dumb down our children. We don't want to fall behind countries like China, India, Korea. And to all parents here, the future of our children and community is in your hands.
Ms. Gallup. Andrea. Where are you? There's only a few more if that makes you feel better.
Very short. Okay.
It's okay, Ms. Gallup.
I'm just waiting for something. Close the door. It's okay. Hello, my name is Andrea Gallup. I live in East Williston. I've lived in East Williston for 20 years with my husband and our two boys. I have a 9th grade son here at Wheatley. And before I finish speaking what I prepared, I just want to jump off from what Mike Gianna said. I want to just speak to the D in diversity and make it very clear, I live and breathe that too. Just like Mike, I am a Roman Catholic, Italian-American, 100% Italian. Born and raised here in Long Island, only in Williston Park. I haven't moved far. My husband is from Russia. He is Jewish, and we live and breathe diversity in my home, just so everybody knows. So we could just not worry about me and my thoughts and where I come from and how I look. Not judge me by how I look, okay? Diversity is my life. My children are 50% Russian, and they are 50% Italian. And we celebrate all of the Catholic holidays, and we celebrate every Jewish holiday faithfully. My boys wear yarmulkes. Okay? Let's just get that out of the way because everybody's all about diversity. Diversity, diversity. All right, let's move on. I am here tonight to speak because I am bothered by a building leader's unedited statements on the Project Veritas video where he states, "That speaker, who we had, that anti-racist speaker, said, 'You're either racist or you're anti-racist. There's no in-between. If you're not doing anti-racist work, then you're contributing to racial divide.'" Why does this leader support a speaker for our school that would promote racial activism? What if a student didn't want to be an activist? Side note, my kid couldn't kill us. He just wants to play baseball, okay? He thinks he's gonna be a Major League Baseball player. That's all his mind is on, okay? He's 14. Give him a break. Give him a break. No, not this gentleman. No. Well, what if a student didn't want to be an activist? Then they were, according to this leader's belief, a racist. This is the leader of our school pushing and supporting an initiative, DEI, that assumes that if students are racist or that the school and the community have a racism problem. All of my experience for the past 20 years have shown that East Williston has always been inclusive, we do not have a racism problem, and I resent and I am deeply upset that this person is guiding the minds of our children and can make such presumptions about the community in which they serve. Number one, don't indoctrinate my children with an ideology that they need to be activists against racism or be considered a racist. No in-betweens. Don't push ideologies in our school that make assumptions about the community you serve as either having a racism problem or needing to be treated against a racism problem. This leader should be spending the first year getting to know the community they serve, not making assumptions that we need to be taught how to not be racist. So stop judging, okay? Be open-minded, lead with kindness, and believe in the best in people and the community that you serve. Leave behind the negative judgmental approach. Leave it behind. Clearly, what we have experienced here tonight, prior to all the speakers coming up, with the athletic accomplishments of the kids, the musical achievements, students with a deep passion for service to others, this is what they spend their free time working on, okay? They want to be good for their parents, they want to work on their SATs and their ACTs, they want to get stuff on their resume so that they could be accepted to college. This is what, you all know this is what we're focused on, right? So this is what they should be focused on outside of school, and they should never be judged because they're not involved in activism. And I have one last thing. Might be a little silly, but something for you all to think about. On my son's wall, he has a sign. I gave it to him. It says, "What's right is right, even if no one is doing it. And what's wrong is wrong, even if everyone is doing it." I suggest for you all to reflect on that. You have a lot of thinking to do, every one of you. Tonight, it's so evident, there is no trust in the jobs that all of you hold. It's horrible. It's just horrible. Every one of you, I don't know how you're gonna go to bed tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Gallup. Ms. Santos. Renata.
So, it's Monday night, right? None of us wanted to be here. And I find it sad that we have to be. And this is not a difficult district to manage. There's no gang violence, plenty of budget, always supportive. Most parents are, you know, calm and collected, not all of us, but some. Why, when something like this happened, the response could not have been different? People are here because that email that went out or that announcement was not what we wanted to hear from you guys. We wanted to make sure that you understand how we are feeling about what we saw, edited or not edited, and to take action. Open an investigation. So let's talk about transparency, and I'm not gonna get even started on the hiring practices and parents being part of committees. You know, I've been a part of a couple. Kind of a waste of time, don't think that our opinions were ever taken into account. I have shared my concerns about this specific process this year. I would like an investigation on that as well. I would like to know if disclosures of personal relationships were made, if the appropriate people were excused from the process because they had friendships of over 10, 12 years with one of the candidates. I want to understand the comparison between the last two candidates, one with high school principal experience, one with none. One with a lengthy stay in his previous two schools, one that spent a year in his last job, two years in the job before that, never as a high school principal. What happened? How did we end up with this choice versus the other choice, or any other choice for that matter? It concerns me because, you know what? I have the utmost respect. I don't know all of you personally, I know some, and my interactions have been nothing but professional and respectful, but that doesn't make me feel great about it. And I am always transparent, and I share those concerns. And not surprised that we find ourselves here six months into this new tenure. If nothing else, is a massive showing of a lack of judgment to be saying some of those things on camera or not on camera. I'm not sure that I feel that comfortable with that being the leadership for our high school, especially coming from what we had before. So those are my concerns. I think this is not the level that we expect for this district. And I feel that is also not a representation of all the work that Dr. Gately has done. And I think it's unfortunate that it's happening on her first year as superintendent on her own. Do not let this impact all the work that you have done to get to where you are today. It's not fair to you. Make the right choice based on merit and nothing else. Thank you.
Leat, I just need to give you back your form before you speak because you left parts uncompleted. You left parts uncompleted, if you could, so we have an ability to respond.
My phone? Good evening. I know that everyone is tired. And I'll try to be very, very short. I didn't plan to say anything tonight. I have plenty to say. I have plenty of, like, tons of questions to ask. I watch the board meetings. I attend when I can. I was here after the high school graduation. I spoke from my heart. I left my home country, my safe place, a wealthy family behind, to leave conflicts behind. I picked my husband and moved here to raise up a family that I, in a place that I can trust, to raise them without any ideas, funky ideas of racism, of who is better, who has bigger, and anyone to teach them who they should be, by any mean. I'm not gonna get into sexual identity aspect. I'm not gonna get into if they should get married or pick their girlfriend or boyfriend from a specific group, ethnic group, or another. I came here to start from blank, scratch, hoping that the United States of America, New York, will allow that. Carrying democratic or liberal ideas cannot be enforcing your ideas on someone else. Speaking about being inclusive, meaning accepting the others. Tonight, we have experienced and watched a group of, I'm impressed. All of those parents, they have kids, they have minors at home. The time is nearly 11:00 PM. They all came here and spoke intelligently about their fear, about their concerns. We handed our kids the most precious thing that we ever had to you. I decided that I'm not going to give birth before I will be responsible enough to give my kids the most that I can, to educate them, to teach them, to discipline them, to love them, to encourage them, to be whoever they want. And for me, finding out that what I experience, what I watch, what I follow, not only news, but social media and everything I read and experience, that it's not only me, people who grew up here, who saw the Board of Education for decades... who grew up here, who saw the Board of Education for decades, performing on a different level. I cannot compare it. I do not have anything to compare because from where I came, it doesn't work like that. It's different. However, those parents lost their trust, and it just gave me the understanding that something is broken. And I don't want to start over again and to wrap my kids and to start over in another state, in another country. I can, but why? We have, we have one purpose. Those kids are tomorrow's future of this country, of this state. You cannot do whatever you want. It doesn't work like that. After the graduation, the Board closed the meeting with no additional notes. Please don't do it again. Please. I, I do not have any other words to say. Please don't close it with any further notes. Something has to be changed. Everyone watched Spider-Man, right? And I think it's from there. There is a statement said, "With great power comes great responsibility, not privileges, not the authority to change something you shouldn't. Responsibility on our young kids, the most precious thing that we ever had, and we gave it to you for most of the hours of the day that I wish I could be, I could spend with them the same amount of time you do. But I'm not a teacher, I'm not an educator, and their place is in school, in your schools." Please, take everything that's been said here, not as an insultment, sorry, not as something that should be devastating. Devastating, I'm tired, and it's not my first language, I'm sorry about that. Try to see how you bring your knowledge, experience, ambitious, and take it to a much better place where it used to be, where it should be. That's all I have to say.
The last slip I have here is from Saleo Gupta, but you did not complete the slip. Are you still here? Do you still want to approach the Board? No?
If nobody has anything to say, I just...
Saleo Gupta? No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go around again. Everyone's had a chance to speak.
I just need solutions, that's it.
Thank you. Okay. So with that, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss matters of personnel. The Board of Education is not expected to come out to take any further action this evening. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing, no discussion. Call for the vote. All in favor? 5-0, thank you very much.